Everyone, we will go ahead and get started. A copy of our Open Meetings Act is located in the entryway. It is also on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is in the back, on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Val, could you come, where did Val go? Can you come up and just give a short introduction again of the guests that we have? And then I'm going to continue Commissioner Kraft's. He always had the individuals come up and just tell us their name and where they're from and what they're interested in and their studies are in or what positions they hold. And so we'll just line them up and do that one by one as soon as you give us a background and welcome.
Val McPherson, 6415 Glenwood Road, Omaha, Nebraska. Good morning.
Good morning.
I am so glad to once again be back in front of you to introduce an amazing group of young people. This is a delegation from the Waisili Program of the U.S. Department of State. UNO received a grant from the U.S. Department of State in 2015 to bring the future leaders of Southeast Asia as selected by our embassies in their countries to the United States for a program of civic engagement and leadership. These are young individuals who have already shown their leadership capability in their home countries and came to the attention of our embassies as a result. UNO received the original grant and UNO was so productive in what they were doing for this program that first the State Department added additional delegations. And then the State Department renewed the grant for the first time. And then the State Department made UNO the prime or lead university overseeing not only their own Waisili programs, but those at Arizona State University and now Portland State University. And the State Department has now just renewed the grant for another three years. And that will mean that there will be a minimum of six more Waisili delegations coming to Omaha as well as the ones that will be coming each year to Portland State University and Arizona State University. These young people have been selected by a process that has been used by the State Department since just before the World War II for the International Visitor Leadership Program. Same process for selecting who gets to participate. The alumni of that program, over 500 of them have gone on to be the president or prime minister of their country. Where was I? So you have the opportunity today to see young people who have not only had the opportunity to already show their leadership skills, but you can pretty much be assured that they're going to make a tremendous impact, not only on their own countries, but on the rest of the world. So once again, it is my honor to present another Waisili delegation, the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Institute. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, thank you so much for visiting us. And if you all could just line up and give us your name, where you're from, your position or what you're studying, that would be wonderful.
Alitia from Malaysia. So my name is Ali, currently from Malaysia as part of the program. So back in my home country, I work as the lead public policy researcher to the Malaysian opposition leader, Mr. Anwai Brahim at the Parliament of Malaysia, which is the Congress equivalent here. But by night, I am a community builder where I participate in democratic participation, where my NGO recently lobbied for the lowering of voting age from 21 to 18, which we gave recs to 6 million youth voters in Malaysia. Thank you.
Very good. Karen, can you work the microphone so it gets a little closer so we can hear better?
Okay, hi, good morning. I am Iman Jasmina from Malaysia. I am now a final year law student in Malaysia, but I co-founded an NGO, one of the earliest NGO to research, to collect data on the issue of period poverty in Malaysia. Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Hello, my name is Alway Ramantan and I'm from Brunei. I advocate on representation of the indigenous and marginalized groups of communities in my home country. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julia from Vietnam. So I graduated from law school, but now I'm working in business industry. I'm now working in two projects, like International Youth Club and one to advocate and raise awareness of human trafficking in Vietnam. Thank you so much.
Very good, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you all. My name is Felita. I'm from Indonesia. And back in Indonesia, we run an organization where we use sports as a common ground to work and empower female youths and also marginalized youths. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nelfia Ribiru and I come from Timor-Leste. And I'm interested in social issues and I'm working with a local NGO in my country and focus on violence prevention against women. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Luxina Bella Fares. You can call me Luxi. I come from Indonesia. And I am a founder of Pukaps Pusat Kajian Perempuan Solo. We call it Women's Study Center in our county. And we focus on advocating women with sexual violence and through providing them by a safe space through discussion and a free space to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I am Lyra Shin Batao from the Philippines. Just like you guys, I am also an elected official back in the Philippines. Like in your government, the closest to the people, it's called the barangay level. So I am the youngest. And also, I am here for my advocacy about mental health awareness and intervention, especially to the sexually abused children.
Ian got the most votes, right?
So hi, everyone. My name is Ruslina from Thailand. Okay, Ruslina from Thailand. And I'm as a project manager, working on NGO in Thailand. And we basically advocate on social enterprise for youth and local community in Thailand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, good morning. My name is Dexter Yang. You can call me Dex from the Philippines. I've co-founded a nonprofit called Good Gov PH, which advocates for stronger youth participation, local governance and public policy. So we do a lot of trainings and lobbying work to make sure that more young people are represented and that they are empowered to champion good governance in their respective communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Phum Tao from Vietnam. And I'm currently working for the public health sector in Vietnam. I'm passionate about raising people's awareness towards health issues and I hope everyone can get assessed to qualified healthcare services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you so much for inviting us in here. We're very honored to be here. My name is Puspa. I'm from Indonesia. Professionally, I work as government official, government employee in an Indonesian election supervisory body where we supervise every election process in the country. And in my passion, I also passionate about education. Thank you so much. It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for having me here and with all of the fellow from Southeast Asia. So I'm Riza from Indonesia. And I volunteer in several youth-led organizations in my hometown. And currently, I'm working in two organizations. The first one is Diverseling Actions, which focuses on the environmental issues in the coastal area. And I also work in Sustainable District Association for the junior officer for a COVID-19 program for disability people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Police Lieutenant Itisak Kalajogit. You can call me Gino. I'm working as a police officer, specifically inquiry police officer at the Jakarta Police Station, which is in Bangkok. I'm also a co-founder of Law Enforcement Association for Development. And thank you for hosting us today.
Thank you. All right, one more.
So good morning, everyone. Thank you for this valuable opportunity for us to be here. My name is Senosit Thamoni and I'm from Cambodia. Currently, I'm a co-founder of a digital marketing agency in Cambodia. And I am also a co-founder of an international youth club, which I do it with our fellow here and also with our fellow in Arizona State as well. Thank you.
Thank you. No? Nope?
Okay, good morning, everybody here. And thank you for having me today. And my name is Darasun from Cambodia. And I am graduated from the major of English Literature. And currently, I'm working as the project coordinator in the local NGO in my community. And we are striving to shorten the gap of education between the city and the countryside. And we also empower youth and engage them to the government for a better governance. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Was that it? All right. Well, again, welcome to all of you. We are so excited to have you and hear where you're from and what you're involved in. And as we see what you will do in the future, I can see big and bright things for all of you. So thank you for being with us this morning. All right. Commissioner Boyle?
I just wanted to make another comment. I also appreciate you being here. I think if we, in hearing everything that you're all involved in, those are things that every country needs to be involved in. And that's engagement of youth as yourselves. And then you're trying to engage more youth, which is fantastic. But really, I find that sometimes, to be honest with you, a lot of politics is run by people that are much older. And I think that there's a lot of things that young folks can teach us. And I feel that most as a mother to two early 20-year-olds, they teach me a heck of a lot, sometimes in a very forthright way. So bottom line is I appreciate everything you seem to be doing regarding the environment, domestic violence, women, youth, education. And just to have your engagement is really critical, not just to the future of your own countries, but really to the future of the world. You're kind of where, your mindset is where all countries need to be. And I just wanted to say thank you for coming and being engaged and keep it up. We need to get more young folks involved in the political process and in government.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will go ahead and begin our meeting. And we'll start with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. He has a family engagement. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, May 17, 2022. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, June 7, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I'm glad to see a lot of young people here this morning. It just happens to be a coincidence that I have a topic related to civic engagement. And I hope that they are learning. There are different kinds of citizen engagements. Citizen engagement that we saw in the summertime of 2020 is, I hope, not what they're learning in terms of what citizen engagement is. I hope they are learning the true history of our culture, our country, and how we were founded on a different and totally unique form of government. Most governments, from tyranny to democracy, which is not the same as republic, which we are, have failed. Most of the young people in this chamber today know the history from their area of the world. That tyranny sometimes slides in from even democracy. That's why we have a different, called a compound constitutional, a unique compound constitutional republic. Because we do have a say. It is our constitution and it is for we, the people. But we elect you. We elect the federal government, but we also elect you to represent us. I want to present something today that I might read a few things off of. I'll just give you a summary of it. Particularly in view of Memorial Day coming up, to honor all of those that died for our republic, for our country, America, the United States. I think it is time that we open a conversation because we have heard so much about racism and diversity, equity creeping into these chambers today. Those are the ways that governments slide into democracy. And then people get worked up and then they go do things like the French Revolution, storm the steel. These people, their families in the past, their countries in the past have experienced a hell of a lot worse than we have. But there is an organization in Omaha that is trying to bring into this whole discussion something about uniqueness of our country. We do welcome, I'm going to name the organization. It's Global Faith. And I'm going to present something from their front page, their webpage. They are trying to open the dialogue with Muslims. Because if you're coming to be a citizen in this country, a resident of this country, you are required to take an oath to our country and support our constitution. We were founded on different principles. We do not talk about specific denominations of religion, but we were based on religious principles. Mark Christian's organization is trying to open that dialogue so that we can learn from each other. And welcome Muslims, but let them know that if you are in this country, you're coming here, you want to reside here, you want to take advantage of our system, then you recognize our culture. You practice our culture, not yours. If you want to do that in your home, your privacy of your home or your little building somewhere, that's fine and dandy. But you are subservient to our constitution, our culture, and you're not to try to change ours. One of the things about Islam, we can have that discussion, and that's why I'm bringing it up, is the policies that people have to follow if they are going to live under Islam are completely evil.
One minute.
Completely evil from a number of ways. And people need to find out why. Mark Christians Institute will tell you that. Tell you why. He's a converted Muslim. He grew up in Egypt. He decided to find out about the word of Jesus. And he converted. And he had to leave because he converted. He was under threat of death because he didn't subvert to the Islamic Muslim religion. How we can separate good Muslims from Islamists is another matter because we do not discuss it. We need to. We will welcome Muslims that want to engage in our culture and accept our culture. We will not welcome Islamists or Islamist practices. Okay? There's a difference. So let's have that debate.
Anyone else wishing to, anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. Well, I don't know what to say, but that was. Someone asked, I'm speechless, to be honest. We're going to have someone come up here and talk about people who believe in Islam are evil. I mean, you can find evil people that practice every religion, so. I don't know. I'm not the best person to talk about this, but I just, every now and then, I just feel like we can't let that be the last word on something. So, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Next, we'll move to resolutions. We have resolutions D, E, F, and G. And on G, I may note that the first CAC 22044 is being asked to be taken out and would be brought back at a later date. So with that change, resolutions D, E, F, G, with the change H and I for the resolutions, there is no need for an executive session. And so the motion can include adjournment.
Madam Chair, I apologize. We didn't catch what was changing.
The first CAC on G, item G, 22044.
Okay. And that was the only change?
That was the only change.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the resolutions and adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. And before we begin, I do want to congratulate our colleague, Commissioner Garcia, for earning his PhD this past week. And tell me again, it's in?
In Theological Studies and Ministry. A little different from my day job.
Well, very good and congratulations to you. With that, we move to A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, May 17, 2022. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, May 31, 2022. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda. Items A, item A with six items underneath of it. Is there a motion to approve consent? Oh, sorry, I didn't turn my page. Items A through K. Is there a motion to approve consent? E4, all right. Any others? All right. With that, is there a motion to approve consent minus E4? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll go back to item E4. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
We have one recognition, recognition of the following county employee who has retired, Alma Daiminiko, who worked for the Douglas County Health Department for 14 years. They are not present, but we do want to wish a very happy retirement and thank them for their service to Douglas County. With that, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Board on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our Finance Committee, our budget report as presented. And then we have an ARPA funding request to allocate $19,800 to Omaha Cornhusker Cosmopolitan Foundation to provide 36 scholarships to Camp Floyd Rogers to diabetic children from economically disadvantaged families, many of whom are dealing with mental health issues. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero. And if I may, I meant to disclose this before the vote, but I'm on the, as I think most of you know, I'm on the Cornhuskers Cosmopolitan Club. I'm in the club. And we definitely appreciate this and excited that we get to use the money to send hopefully all 36 kids to the camp over the next three years. So thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we will move to the. Okay, with that, we will move to the presentation by the Douglas County Public Defender's Office on the department's fiscal year 2223 budget request, which is in excess of their budget target amount by $350,671. The amount requested in total is $7,185,742. And with that, we do have Tom Riley here, our public defender with us. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Ferguson and members of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. My name's Tom Riley, I'm the Douglas County Public Defender, and here with me today are the people that are the brain trust behind helping me formulate the budget and the budget request, Martha Wharton, Carol Jennings, and Samantha Dewis. And Sam is also here to help me because I'm technologically challenged, so she'll help me with the PowerPoint that she does in court when I'm trying to do these things. Obviously, the request that I've made is significantly over the target number, and I historically haven't done this, but I think we have some catch-up to do, and we have some expenses that I don't think there's much we can do about. The first thing that I'm asking is a little bit out of the ordinary, but I'm asking that a $150,000 salary increase that would commence in July of 2022 exclusive of the January, regular January salary adjustments. And the reason is, well, there are several, but as I think most of you know, by statute, the pay of the Public Defender's Office attorneys is required to be commensurate with that of the, their counterparts in the Douglas County Attorney's Office, who are of equal experience and ability, I think is the terminology, obviously. Experience is something that's objective, and ability is a little bit subjective, that's probably my call. And I want to kind of show you what we're kind of up against. I know Don Klein talked last week about the kind of hemorrhaging that went on in his office over the last calendar year, and as a result, made a significant change in the starting salaries. And on this graph that you can see in front of me are hiring salary, opening salary of a lawyer that's of little or no experience is $60,000. Theirs was, but they moved it up to 67, and then after four months raised it to basically So our younger lawyers, you know, I would not be standing in front of you if the pay difference was 1,000 bucks, 1,200 bucks, but when it gets to 7, 8, $9,000, I think that it's something that needs to be addressed, it needs to be addressed as soon as possible. The, the graph here also shows what happens after several months, and even after two years, our salaries at 65.5 for the average of people that are two years, and theirs is 69.3 after four months. So I've got people that have been working there for two, three years that are behind someone that's just walking in the door in the county attorney's office. Just to, another way of showing what's going on, the city attorney, their pay starts at 73, and as you can see, after two years, theirs is at 85. I put this in front of you because these are the people that we're competing with to get young lawyers. And the reason the city attorney's office isn't there is because we handle misdemeanors that are prosecuted by the city, as well as the misdemeanors that are prosecuted by the county attorney. County attorney's misdemeanors are pretty limited to domestic violence misdemeanors, whereas the city attorney prosecutes all of the other misdemeanors, DUIs, driving during suspension, trespass, assaults, all of those things. So you can see that there's a significant discrepancy in the pay that we're offering for lawyers versus what our, some of our competition is offering. And this is just, you know, some, some people like graphs and some people like bar graphs, so this is kind of the same thing, except it's in a more of a linear graph form. We'll go to the next page. Also, I think of equal importance is the starting salary comparisons between Douglas, Sarpy, and Lancaster County. Look at the difference. I mean, it's startling. I'm not going to sit here and demean the work of the Sarpy or Lancaster County Public Defender's Offices, but I am going to stick up for our folks and tell you that we handle a hell of a lot more cases, a hell of a lot bigger caseload, a hell of a lot more significant, serious crimes than they do. In addition, Lancaster County Public Defender have put the cap on their caseload. So if an attorney or their office reaches a certain level of cases, they tell the court, we ain't taking any more cases, go ahead and appoint private counsel at 80, 85, 90 bucks an hour, whatever they're paying down there. So I've never done that, and it's always been my position that when the caseloads get out of hand, I come and ask you if I can hire another attorney. And you've always, the county board has always understood and worked with us in an effort to accomplish that, because I think you all know that, in addition to providing excellent representation for the indigent clients of the office, we also do it at a cost-efficient, in a cost-efficient manner. So as you can see, and once again, these are, those are the people we're competing with. Here, we look with, you know, when we talk about experience, you're looking at, you know, the grads from between the years 2018 and 2021, and what our folks are making versus their counterparts in the county attorney's office, and once again, you can see that there is a significant disparity ranging from $9,000 down to about, wow, $5,000. So I, I, I think there's a, I have a sense of urgency in trying to catch up with these, with these salary discrepancies, because if we just keep doing percentage increases, we're going to get further and further and further behind. And I don't think that's what we all want to do. In addition to the salary request of 150,000, we're asking for an increase of $70,000 for expert witnesses. I, I've got a PowerPoint explanation here, I also, I think I put it in my letter to all of you, I don't want to take up more time than necessary, but the, the expert witnesses that we call are primarily involved in mental health, that the vast majority of the costs that we incur are hiring mental health experts to evaluate our clients. The number of mental health experts that are willing to do forensic evaluations is diminishing. And they're, just like anything else, it's a situation where they can charge pretty much what the market will bear, and the market bears pretty high, I mean, some of these guys are charging 350, 400 bucks an hour for a valid, mental health evaluation. Now, we do use, sometimes we use the regional center on lower-level cases, which is a minimal cost to the county, but in serious cases, we, we just can't ethically do that because the regional center doesn't honor patient-physician privilege. So if they evaluate one of our clients, they send the evaluation to the prosecutors and send it to the judge, and we can't have that. So we have experienced a significant increase over the last several years, and this includes juveniles who are charged as adults, and we want to have them adjudicated in juvenile court as opposed to adult court, we have to have a hearing. Typically, that means we hire an adolescent neuropsychologist to do a very in-depth evaluation and to testify about the now-well-accepted fact that the brain development of juveniles does not complete itself until in the mid-20s, and that the part of the brain that is least developed is the executive function portion of the brain, which, as explained to me, is how do I weigh the cost-benefit analysis of going and robbing a quick shop? And this is really important stuff, because if you have a 15-year-old kid who is accused of committing a serious offense, he, he or she could be facing up to 50 or 100 years in prison, or going to juvenile court and getting the services in juvenile court, so that there's a huge difference to the client, and it's very important. In addition to that, of course, every, every serious case now is DNA. And when I talk about serious cases, I'm not talking about sexual assaults and homicides and shootings. I'm talking about felony possession, or they call it now possession of a firearm by a prohibited person. That carries a mandatory three-year prison sentence with a maximum of 50 years in prison. And frequently, what they're doing is they're examining the firearm, let's say a gun is found in a car with four, four kids in it, so they'll try to get the DNA off the, off the gun, and it's called touch DNA, it's from skin cells. And now they're using this technology in those types of cases, not just rapes and homicides, it's felony possession or prohibited person possession. And there is a definite difference of opinion about the validity of the new methodology used in interpreting DNA. We recently had a case where we had to hire an expert from Scotland, and because of his testimony, we got a favorable result. He challenged the accuracy and methodology of the DNA that was being analyzed by the med center. So these are important issues that we have to deal with, and it's always been my belief that poor folks deserve the same kind of defense as rich folks, and it shouldn't be dependent upon their ability to pony up money to hire an expert witness, it's the difference between going to prison and going home. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at on the, on the expert witness increase. Okay, lecriviers. That may not be a word that is in everyone's vocabulary, but basically, these are machines that we have in our office that are electronically rotating file cabinets, and we've had, Carol, how long, how old is it?
About 18 years.
Okay. We have two of them, right?
Two of them.
Two of them that are 18 years old, and obviously, we're moving to a new building. We need to bring these file cabinets with us, and these are the cabinets that we have to have in our office and readily accessible because they're the most recently closed cases, people that are on probation, people that are maybe on supervised release, there can be violations of probation, et cetera. So we have to be able to grab the file, not have to send people down into the dungeon trying to, trying to dig up these files. So we have them at our, at our disposal quickly so we can handle, handle the cases. You got someone in jail, want to violate for probation, you don't want to say, okay, well, we'll try to get you after we can find your file down in the basement, maybe take a couple, three days, but we'll get you. So we want to be able to have it right, right with us. The problem is, when we talk to people that would be dealing with moving, they said the lecriviers parts no longer are available because of their age, and secondly, that they couldn't guarantee that when they take them apart to bring them across the street that it wouldn't, they wouldn't fall apart. So we looked into the cost, and for two lecriviers, that's 124 grand. That's an ouch. And I did, I did speak with several commissioners, and I spoke with Joe about, is this something that might be something we could use as infrastructure under ARPA funds? I don't know the answer to that. If you think that that's something we can do, and we can knock off 124 grand off our budget, Joe's shaking his head, he doesn't think so. Okay, well, I'm just trying to think outside the box. This is a one-time cost, okay? We, the last time we bought them was 18 years ago. This isn't like a grant where I ask you for some money, and then the grant runs out and I ask you to pony up for us. This is a one-time thing that, you know, if there was any other way that we could figure out how to do it, I would, by all minds, by all means, explore it, but this isn't something that is a luxury item, it's something we just have to have. And I guess that the option is getting new lecriviers and moving, or keeping the ones and staying where we are. I don't want to stay where we're at. I don't know, and I know you've all been down there, my lawyers call them sensory deprivation If you want to see the, the outside world, you have to walk out of the office and look out the window. Okay, here is, here is a request that is not a, I'm not going to stand here and BS you and tell you that this is an absolute, we gotta have it or we can't survive. You know, in a normal year, if I were just asking for $24,000 for this item, I, I think I'd probably be okay. And here, here's what this is. Don talked to you last week about the increase in the usage of body cameras and cruiser cameras in criminal cases. And these things are in all cases where the police are called, so whether it's a drunk driving or a first-degree murder, these cameras are operated. And, you know, historically, what would happen before these things were around, the police would write a report and say, I walked up to the car and I could see the firearm sticking out from underneath the seat, and I grabbed the defendant and he resisted me, and the defendant said, no, that's not what happened, the gun was in the glove compartment, and I didn't resist him, I went to show him where it was, and they yanked me out of the car. Well, in those days, it's who are you going to believe? Now you got the video, and there's usually multiple videos. Keep in mind also, there are videos of the, every time a witness is interviewed in a serious case, it's video and audio recorded. And I suppose if you want to play shortcuts, you could look at the police report and say, okay, here's what happened, but I don't want to play shortcuts. We, we have to look at all of the body cam and all the cruiser cam to see what's what, because that tells you what occurred. I mean, you know, look at all of these cases over, across the country where there's been allegations of police abuse, et cetera, and where there actually been video of these things, so it's not he said, she said, here's what it is. That's what we need, and that's great. The problem is, the amount of time that it takes to go through these body cams and cruiser cams is astronomical. I can tell you, it is extremely time-consuming. You know, even at, even at a DUI stop or suspended license stop, you know, there, there's probably two or three police officers, the cruiser, and they're there for, you know, 45 minutes to an hour, so you're gonna have to watch all, all three, four of those, because they're not always seeing, showing the same thing. This, this program is one that is able to digest the video and transcribe it for, for our lawyers. I'm asking for 20 licenses, we have 56 lawyers, but I want to try it out and see if it's worth it. We have, we have had a demo, I had, what, how many lawyers did we have on, about eight or 10? And it had a demo of this thing, it, it- And it had a demo of this thing, and it really looks like it's a promising device. And instead of me coming up here and saying, I need six more lawyers because we don't have enough hours in the day for lawyers to watch these things, I'd like to give this a try. If this is a one-year license for twenty of them, the twenty-four thou, I'd like to give it a try to see if this is something that we can utilize over a long period of time. I don't know if we'd need a license for every lawyer. We could, you know, if we have, you know, twenty of them, that would probably, might be enough. I'd like to see how often it's used, how much it helps us, and is it really accurate? So that's an ask, but I do think that it's not a huge number, and it might be something that in the long haul can save me from coming up here and saying, hey, I need three, four, five, six more lawyers because this technology requires us to watch the videos and I can't, there aren't enough hours in the day. So that's what that ask is about. The additional requests, well, you can see the two thousand for printing services because the printing office has been discontinued. The five thousand for medical supplies, masks, et cetera, that, you know, we had to purchase this year. I'd like to think that that's not going to be necessary, but I don't know that that's true. You know, this is, you know, hand sanitizers, masks, gloves, books and publications, twenty thousand, once again, all of these things go up. I mean, we have, every year, we purchase a new soft cover volume of the Nebraska Criminal Statutes and Criminal Procedure and Rules of Evidence, and they change every year, as you know. And that's a, you know, fifty-six copies every year. Prosecutors have them, we have them, and we need them, and the cost has significantly And, you know, there, I'm still, we do have Westlaw and technological opportunities to do research, but I am a dinosaur, and I still like books that I can put my hands on. There are several series of books that we've had for years and years, and we get their annual, this is not a new purchase of hardcovers every year, this is just supplements. It's not extremely expensive, but there's about five of them that I think are necessary. They deal with certain seizures, they deal with criminal procedure, they deal with rules of evidence, and they're handy, and I think they're well worth the price. And last but not least, seminar registrations, again, these things, you know, the costs for these, registering for these seminars continues to go up. We have mandatory CLE, continuing legal education, and, you know, I can't not send people to the seminars, but, go ahead, next page. As I'll tell you, there are some things we do to challenge the cost. We have Spanish-speaking attorneys and support staff in an effort to save money on interpreting services. Obviously, we don't have, you know, the diversity in Nebraska and in Douglas County has increased significantly, and there are a number of languages that are less common, and we don't have lawyers to do that. But the primary language spoken that is non-English is Espanol, and we have, I think it's a huge asset to have Spanish-speaking staff members and attorneys so they can communicate with the clients and their families, and we don't have to hire someone to come in and sit with us. I think that's a big deal. We also have, immigration law is another big deal. The consequences, if you're not an American citizen, of getting arrested and convicted could result in deportation and other consequences. So we have to, we, under the Supreme Court orders, we have to tell our clients what the immigration consequences are of, if you get convicted of this offense, here's what's going to happen to you. If we get a plea bargain down to this offense, here's what's going to happen to you. If we get it dismissed, here's what's going to happen to you. Because just getting the case dismissed doesn't automatically make the immigration stuff go away. So we have an obligation, as ordered by the U.S. Supreme Court, to inform them of their, of the consequences of getting involved in the criminal justice system. And we have lawyers that we give training to, to handle this immigration advisories, as we call them. And there's a professor at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln who we have become friendly with, who is an expert in this, and he comes up twice a year and gives a free seminar to our lawyers, and he is a great guy. And anytime we have questions, we can call him, he'll answer them, and we don't get rung up at all. So, you know, that's, because some of the lawyers in our office went to UNL and got to know him, he got friendly with us, and he's been a huge asset to us. You know, there is a difference between the county attorney's office and our office. And just in case some of you are unaware, we don't do civil stuff. Obviously, the county attorney has obligations in criminal, and also, as Teresa can tell you, they have a civil staff that handles cases that involve the county as either a plaintiff for or defendant, or handling contracts, et cetera. So we don't do that. But we, the county attorney's office does not handle appeals. So if we lose a trial and we have to appeal it, the county attorney's office doesn't do the appeal, the attorney general's office does it. We do our own appeals, okay? Additionally, with regard to contempt hearings for child support violations where you can go to jail, we've had an agreement with the county board over the years that we would handle those cases because the Constitution requires representation because you can go to jail. And the county attorney's office does not handle those cases. We handle them. And there's a significant number of them, and they're kind of ongoing. It's another reason to keep our lectrivers because a guy's got five kids and not paying child support, and, you know, he goes to jail, and he comes out, and then he gets back in, and he gets a job, and he comes back. It's a vicious cycle a lot of times. So that's something that they don't do that we do. And of course, I already mentioned the thousands of misdemeanor cases that we handle in county court that are not the responsibility of the county attorney's office. I say these things not in any way to diminish the import of the county attorney's office. I just want to distinguish, because I know sometimes they'll say, well, you guys don't have a, you don't have a civil division, so you're not, it's apples and oranges. Well, it is apples and oranges to a degree, but I think there is some indication from what I just told you that there are responsibilities exceed theirs in some areas, and their responsibilities exceed ours in other areas. So I just wanted to point that out. And this is, like I said, this is not at all a shot at the county attorney's office, who does, in my opinion, they do a great job. We have also been blessed with a number of lawyers in our office who, prior to coming to our place, worked as clerks for appellate courts. One worked for the appellate court in the Eighth Circuit, one in the state of Washington, and, let's see, who else? Who am I missing here? Oh, that's right, Supreme Court of Michigan. We just had someone leave that was, had previously been a clerk for the Supreme Court. And their responsibility is to vet all the briefs before the cases, the briefs are sent to the appellate courts, and they also carry a full caseload. So, you know, it's a big job, especially with the e-filing that has brought on a significant number of challenges. As you can well imagine, anytime technology rears its head and it's going to be new, especially when it's a statewide change, there's more screw-ups than there are not screw-ups. It's really become very difficult. I'm sure that this will iron itself out over time, but as it stands right now, this is a tough duty, and we have, you know, we have to continuously train the lawyers how to do something. And of course, as soon as we train them, they'll say, well, I did what you told me, but the court wouldn't accept my filing, so you have to call them and say, what the hell did we do wrong? And, you know. So that's kind of where we're at. And I mentioned already the mandatory CLE, and, you know, the way I operate is, we do as much in-house CLE as possible. The court puts a limit on how much of it we can do. But, you know, one of my great pleasures as a public defender is to help mentor our young lawyers, and I get to make presentations to them and our CLEs, and we get credit for the CLE. I do everything I can to avoid travel. You know, most of the national organizations, as I was telling one of you the other day, you know, they don't have their seminars in Bismarck or Pierre or Shadrin. They have them in Vegas, in Miami, in New York, Los Angeles, and those are all kind of expensive operations. And although it'd be a nice perk to send them, I try to, you know, save money and have them go to local CLEs, which may not be quite as sexy, but they get the job done as far as the requirements. And what I have done is, a lot of the seminars that are national, they record them, so I can spend, you know, a hundred and fifty bucks, buy the recording, and then use that as part of our CLE, in-house CLE, and show them selected portions of that fancy seminar in Vegas. So I think that's something that is also important. Also, as I mentioned, I don't put caps on our caseload, we adjust. And sometimes, that's a tough duty, and our lawyers get underwater a little bit. And thanked in large part to Martha and Carol, they keep a real close eye on the distribution of the cases so that one person isn't handling two hundred cases and someone else handling a hundred and ten. They keep a close eye on it, and we distribute the cases on a daily basis to try to make an equitable distribution. Obviously, the more serious cases have to go to the more experienced lawyers, but they do a great job on kind of keeping up with the way things are. And it's always important to have good communication with our staff lawyers. And finally, just kind of to put an exclamation point on what we're up against, May seventeenth here, they email that was sent to all the lawyers that were involved in the Criminal Defense Lawyers Association in Nebraska, which is pretty much everybody. And as you can see, it's, hey, gang, starting salary at Lancaster County Public Defender, seventy-one thousand six hundred and eighty-three, come on down. Well, so I've got a lawyer making sixty grand, been here for a year and a half, they can travel down the road, make ten grand more, do less cases, do fewer cases, not less cases, fewer. And, you know, I don't make people send me a running sample either, by the way, but that's just them. I'm just saying, this is kind of where we're up against, and that's why I'm saying, I'm asking that this increase be given, allowed to go into effect in July. And that hundred and fifty thou will be spent or distributed primarily among the lower half of the lawyers on the pay scale. We'll, you know, address the moderately and higher-paid attorneys with their salary adjustment in January. So I'm just hoping that we can play catch-up, and like I said, this is what we're up against. So with that, I will shut up and be happy to answer any question, any questions that you have.
Thanks, Tom. We do have a couple, Commissioner Friend and then Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Tom, thanks for the information. As long as I've known you, you're a pretty serious guy, and we appreciate it because we're running into some weird things coming down the road here. But what I like is, based on the information you provided, you're helping to give, your office helps to give citizens, and it's a constitutional right, a rapid and fair trial, and we appreciate that because it can be done in a lot of different ways, and you guys do it in a pretty unique fashion in Douglas County compared to a lot of the other counties around. And the other thing that I think is important, it's always, it's always important through these budget items for all of us to distinguish between want and need. And a lot of the things, and I'm not patting you on the back or handing you superlatives, a lot of times, you cut right through that. You just, I mean, all of those things seem like needs to me, but that's to the eye of the beholder. The county board, which is responsible for approving the budget requirements, I think I appreciate that because I've been here a year and a half, I have worked through budget items before, but it's very much appreciated. So with that said, the, you and I visited very briefly about it, there's no other way around, this sounds a little trite, but there's no other way around the issue with those cabinets, right?
No.
I mean, we did visit about it. Could you tell us again, if we moved the ones you had, how much of a ticket item was that? I didn't write it down.
Carol, you want to come up? Carol, is the...
This seems like the least of the important items, but it doesn't sound the way you've described it, that it is...
It's not an option. Carol's our office manager, and she handles all this kind of thing, and she dealt with the folks that are talking about the move, and that's all.
So Carol Jennings, Public Defender's Office. I actually have not obtained a quote for moving the lectrivers because the vendor, which is Hubel, came and looked at our units and made it very clear that those units are just not cost-effective to move them. So at this time, I don't have that information. I didn't even obtain the quote because the parts are unavailable, and they felt that it was, by moving them, you were already compromising units that have already, are so mature that they probably wouldn't even make the move.
Where'd the one-twenty-four come from?
The one-twenty-four comes from two new units, each of which came out to sixty-two thousand dollars each. That was for two brand-new units to be moved into the new space.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think what she's saying is that she didn't get a quote for the cost of how much it would cost to move because they said, you're dreaming.
Yeah, exactly. They just said it's not cost-effective, and so I didn't obtain that information, but I certainly could obtain it.
Okay, thanks, Carol. And finally, to the best of our knowledge, it's a pretty unique, well, not to the best of our, it's a pretty unique item. There's not a whole lot of people building these, right? I mean, that would be...
We only have one vendor that we've worked with for many years, and that's Hubel. And I believe that's also the vendor that the clerk of district court uses.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a similar unit, it's bigger than ours.
They have lots of them up there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I want to thank you all again for the...
You can ask John.
Yeah, right. All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Morgan?
Tom, you and I visited last week, and I really agree with what Commissioner Friend has said totally, except for one part of it where he said he wasn't going to pat you on the back, but he didn't want to do that, but I do want to do it. You know, I know you're here on Saturdays and so on. I think one statement you made was ten thousand dollars more in Lincoln, but if it's seventy-one and you're paying an attorney fifty-two or whatever you said, you know, it's almost twenty thousand dollars, a forty percent increase, or at least thirty-five percent increase if I go there to work instead of staying where I am.
Yeah, from sixty to seventy-two, whatever that number is.
Yeah, fifty to seventy-two. So that's a big number, and I am supportive of what you do, and more importantly, supportive of your great staff that you have in doing the best that you always can and giving that extra effort in what you do. So we'll be visiting with Joe Friend this afternoon. We've got a meeting at two o'clock concerning our finances and the budget for this year. But I am very supportive of your office.
That's appreciated.
So thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. And like I said, if you have any questions, I, I'll be here.
Is that all?
That's all.
Okay, Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, I also want to thank you for the presentation. I think it helps for us to see not only what you're asking for, but also the, the cost savings, specifically the fact that you don't take a cap on cases. I think that, that it sounds like it's very burdensome at the same time what you're doing there is you're, you are saving money for the county. And so, so I think what it boils down to is it helps to see that some of the actions you're already taking are, are really cost savings, cost saving mechanisms. And I think that helps me understand better about some of the things you're, you're asking for too. So, and just, just, just a statement, the fact that you said that you feel like the poor deserve the same represent, representation as the, as the wealthy, that really resonates. And so, so I appreciate that mindset in, in that office.
Thanks. That's, that's kind of our mantra, honestly.
Right, I totally agree. I appreciate that. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right, with that, no other lights. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get back to work. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Larry?
Thank you. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Thank you, Mr. Friend. You brought up some pretty good questions. But I, you know, I need to understand our government a little bit better because I guess we have a strong mayor, but she couldn't veto any of this spending. So I think it's really left to you people to pull a line item veto or something, whatever you have to do. But, you know, I hear these things, cost savings and cost effective, but why is the dollar amount going up if it's all cost effective and it's saved money? How much more money do you keep giving? Maybe you need to cut some programs. Programs that apparently haven't reduced the cost of government, but they promised that they will. So maybe the problem is a matter of judgment. Judgment of the people that disperse the money. The citizens elect you to disperse the money effectively, not to programs that aren't effective. So we're waiting for you to do a line item veto on some things, to bring this cost back down. Because quite frankly, I may have to go to Iowa to be able to afford my property taxes, some of which you blame on school levy, but altogether it comes out of our pockets. So, you know. Another thing bothers me, some of these programs that he's talking about, like this new software program, do you not realize that people can alter videos? They do it all the time on YouTube and Twitter and TikTok, which I don't go on those things because of it. You can give your body cams to this company and they can alter it. So what do you have? Maybe false evidence? I think he had a veto that idea. And if these 56 lawyers can't do things without having to go to expensive national training sessions, excuse me, can they not do these things on their own, at home, at night, like most of us have to do? I get upset when I hear all these people, real smart people get free rides. Kids that need the money don't get any scholarships, but the, but the A student gets free rides. Well, most of these lawyers are probably A students. And they're being programmed by University of Nebraska Law School? For what? For half Creighton? You spending money sending them there? Why? Why don't you say no to some of these requests? And, you know, I, I guess I don't understand your rules either. I don't, I didn't time him, but he went way over an hour. And I don't know whether that's a presentation or a debate or just a guest. But we're expecting more good judgment out of our people up there at those seven seats. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Good morning.
Good morning. Wayne Hudson, Chief Deputy, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Just want to speak on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and our body cam program. Within the next, I say within three months, we will also have body cams coming online. So in regards to Public Defender Tom Riley's request for that software, it's going to be beneficial because we'll be adding on at least 60 body cams to our department. And then within the next year, probably another 60 to 65. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? All right, thank you all for being here today. Before we go on to the sheriff's, I would like to do the, there's one more ARPA funding on our agenda, but I do have to go back because I was remiss in mentioning that the other ARPA one we did for Omaha Cornhusker Cosmopolitan Foundation was invested out of Commissioner Kavanaugh's, Commissioner Friends and Commissioner Morgan's ARPA funding for each commissioner. And with that, there is one other ARPA funding, the approval of resolution authorizing the award of $280,000 to hear and reconnect to provide funding for the flow through summer program for youth and parents with the aim of reducing youth crime in Douglas County through a program targeted to developing self regulatory capacities and healthier lifestyles. This is being invested out of my Commissioner Borgeson's fund at $280,000 over a three-year period. I'm hoping that once we see the fruits of our labor on this one, that we may be able to offer it to other nonprofits or to another school district. And so with that, I would ask for a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Great, thank you. Now we'll go back to the agenda, the presentation by Douglas County Sheriff's Office on the department's fiscal year 2223 budget request, which is $849,420 in excess of their budget target amount. The amount requested in total is $20,297,214. And with us today, we have Sheriff Wheeler and Chief Deputy Wayne Hudson. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sheriff Tom Wheeler. Today's sheriff budget presentation will be broken into two parts. I'll be giving you an overview of our requested budget along with some historical trends of, of the department's budget in the past. The second part of the presentation will be, will focus on staffing and securing the newly constructed juvenile justice center. So quickly review our budget. Our current adjusted budget is just under 20.3 million. The target identified by finance for next fiscal year is just under 19.5 million. And our requested budget comes in at just under 20.3 million. That request brings our target total, above target total at 849,000. Most of that covers the costs associated with securing the juvenile justice center. And some of that comes with staffing a new school resource officer at a newly constructed high school. As we take a look at staffing over the last 12 years, our net increase of deputies has been five. We were 133 in 2010 and we currently sit at 138. Most of those additions have come to staff school resource officers at schools within our jurisdiction. I think we're, we're at a total of eight and looking to add a ninth with the new Omaha Public Schools High School. Our civilian staffing has remained mostly constant over the last few years. However, we did add staff when we secured the civic center complex. Some of our slides didn't transfer well to the PowerPoint, so I've included a few handouts for your review. The first is this slide, which is a comparison of the sheriff's annual budget versus revenue. Over the last four years, our adjusted budget has increased by 12% or roughly 3% annually. Our revenue is growing at a slightly higher rate of 5.5% annually. I would also like to note that for 2022, we did not include the ARPA premium pay as it was a one-time event. We don't expect that to be repeated. And the revenue that's listed for fiscal '22, I'm sorry, forgot to go to the next slide there. Our revenue for fiscal '22 is a projection. We won't know the final numbers until the end of this budget year. Population growth is something that we track year to year. The growth of unincorporated Douglas County continues on an upward trend. And to put it in perspective, in 1990, the population of unincorporated Douglas County was just over 47,000 people. And in 2021, the population was just shy of 89,000. And this growth has continued despite dozens of annexations totaling more than 86,000 residents being taken from unincorporated and, and brought into the city. And that this during, of course, the same timeframe. With the number of building permits that you see issued below, we expect that upward growth to continue. This slide is also in your handout. It's a three-year snapshot of population numbers comparing incorporated versus unincorporated areas of Douglas County. Had I asked GIS to take this out to 2018, the county's numbers, unincorporated area was about 75,000. So from 18 to 22, the population has grown from 75 to just under 89,000. The final slide that's included in your handout is a visual representation of population trends in Douglas County from 2010 to 2020. And as you know, most areas of growth, which is shown here in green, fall outside the city of Omaha. The numbers you see here represent average annual changes year over year. So where you see 15% growth, that is 15% a year on average every year since 2010. Okay, unless you have questions on the slides that you've seen so far, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Deputy Hudson to discuss our request to secure the juvenile justice center.
Good morning. So I'm trying to go through these without access to my original notes, but we'll see how they can do. So before I talk about the, as far as cost of the juvenile justice center, I want to kind of lay a little foundation on what's going to be in the center. I'm sure, oh, you guys probably already know that already. Do this way. So the new juvenile justice center will hold six juvenile courts with two additional courtrooms for future expansion. The juvenile court administrator's office, juvenile court clerk's office, county attorney's office, civil and criminal division, and the public defender's office. So if we had all those entities in this building like we have right now, then we can use our different security to respond to different emergencies. But since they're in a different facility, we're going to have to add additional staffing so that we can have staffing in this facility and the civic center and the new juvenile justice center. Duties and responsibilities of the juvenile justice center deputies, you can read those, but one I want to highlight is two deputies to escort each juvenile from a secure side to the juvenile courtrooms. In keeping with the county's commitment to reducing trauma and the stigmatization of incarceration, we're going to change the way we do our escorts. Right now, what happens is this, in the morning time, we'll go over and we'll grab all the juveniles for morning court and we'll put them in holding tanks. And they'll stay in those holding tanks until the judge calls them to court. In the afternoon, we'll take those juveniles back, grab the, the afternoon juveniles and bring them over and put them in the holding tanks and leave them in the holding tanks until the judge calls for them to go to court. Then we'll take them back. The new system is this, when the courtroom, juvenile court asks for a juvenile, we will call over to the youth center, they'll bring that youth to the secure door, two deputies will meet the, the corrections center staff at that door, escort the juvenile to the courtroom, stay in the courtroom while they're there, then when we're done, escort them back to the secure door and give them back to the youth center. So they won't be staying in our holding tank unless it's an emergency situation. We have to have two deputies at all times because what we have learned through our experience is, I think Tom Riley had mentioned it, a lot of these juveniles' brain hasn't developed all the way. So when they hear something that is counter to what they're thinking, for example, they think they may go home and they're not, let's say a parent doesn't show up and then the judge says they're going to put them back in the youth center for a while, sometimes they get upset. And sometimes they can get physical. And if we're going to secure them quickly, safely, using the least amount of force necessary, then the best way to do that is with two deputies. The other thing too is why we need to have two deputies is most time is a family member there with the youth. If the youth gets physical and the adult gets involved, then we have to have two people take care of that situation. So that's why we're looking at two deputies for every time we have a youth in a courtroom. This slide, what I want to highlight here is that in 2019, before COVID and everything ahead, the last time the court was fully opening, we had 996 juveniles transported, 996. And they're transported to court, medical facilities, psychological exams, doctor's appointments, in and out of Douglas County and different placements, 996 juveniles in 2019. Staffing costs. So it is our opinion, what we would like to do is take eight, hire eight deputies and a sergeant. The eight deputies will cost us with equipment, 540,000. The sergeant with equipment, 90,116, for a total of 630,321. Along with the deputies, we also need entrance screening staff and we need a tech to help run the office. So with the entrance screening staff, with their equipment, we're looking at 123,000. The tech is 100, excuse me, tech is 13,000 for a total of 136,000. The total cost is 767,000 for the deputies, entrance screening staff and the tech. Now, one thing I want everyone to notice there, when we're talking about the entrance screening staff and the tech, we wouldn't hire them until around April timeframe. That's why you see March 23 to June 23 on that slide. As far as timeline, to get people hired, what I want to do is present to you how our hiring process works. So we formed a local academy with four other agencies called the Sarpy Douglas Law Enforcement Academy. So the academy has two classes per year, January and July. So for us, we have a post for the position, we have to wait long enough to get enough people to apply for it, we have to have a competency test, interview, polygraph exam, background, psychological exam, physical exam and drug screen. The candidate packets are due to Grand Island 30 days prior to the start of the academy. If we don't have the package there, we cannot send people to the academy. Then after, before they go to the academy, there's a one-week in-service training and after they get done with the academy, there's another one-week in-service training. The academy is 22 weeks long. Once they're done with the academy, they're done with the in-service training, then they have another 14 weeks of field training observation. That is where they learn how to be a law enforcement officer. Now, we saw this coming with the juvenile justice center, so we started our hiring process as soon as we could. So if you look on here, we started on the 23rd of December of 2021. And those are all the steps that we went through. Now for us, we have to have our hiring package to Grand Island by the 4th of June. That's the only way they're going to allow people in the academy. We have to have some type of, well, no, we have to have the package to Grand Island by the 4th of June. This is kind of overall, again, we're asking for, Omaha Public Schools is putting on a new, opening up a new school, they'll be paying half with a school resource officer. That's roughly 51,464. That's again, our summary of what we're asking for, 20-
but hopefully you guys will. This whole thing's about authorized and mandated staffing levels. Authorized and mandated staffing levels. I'm assuming if you don't, let's go to the, let's go to the eight new deputies. I'm assuming that's the number that's been thrown out based on your research and understanding of how you're going to have to create the authorized and mandated staffing level. I'm assuming if you don't get the requested amount, or you believe, of resources or deputies, you would, you would be, you will or would be forced to pull deputies out of the field, correct? I mean, is that a fair assessment?
That's a fair assessment. We have to staff this the way we have to staff it. And if we're, if we don't get approved what we're asking for, we will have to pull from somewhere else and make hard decisions on what aspect of public safety are we going to do less of.
Okay, and that leads me to, I'm not trying to lead you, but that leads me to the second question I had written down here. Of all of those responsibilities in the field, and I've got tons of them, I've had tons of these discussions already, couple of them with you and a couple of them with Chief Hudson, if you, how many of those responsibilities in the field as far as staffing levels are mandated? So in other words, if you pulled three detectives and pulled them down to the courthouse, because the courthouse is a mandated staffing level that you have to achieve. If you pulled them out of the field, where do you pull them from? You can't, you can't pull an SRO because those are mandated, correct? So how, so how many of the things you're doing out in the field could you not, sorry, could you not pull people away from, right? And there's a few, probably half of them, I would assume. Is that correct?
There are some. For example, we have, we have a deputy assigned to community services, that's our only community outreach person. And as you know, in law enforcement, you have to have community outreach. If we take that person away, we lose that connection to the community. There's other things that aren't mandated that we do, for example, human trafficking. That's not mandated in statute, but we believe that it's an important enough issue that we're part of a task force, an area task force, to combat human trafficking. There's other task force positions that are similar to that that aren't mandated by state law, but our community has found that it's important for us to be involved in that because we're involved with Omaha Police, we're involved with Sarpy County Sheriff, we're involved with other area law enforcement collectively to try and combat these issues.
Okay, and so my, my final thing, and I was going to make some statements later, I think we can talk twice, but my final thing is, if you go down the, a few months ago, you were generous enough or walked us through in a criminal justice hearing, the response times. So Douglas County, unincorporated areas in Douglas County, and you showed that earlier, are growing, you know, explosively. Your professional opinion, if you're pulling people from a detective unit, a NARC unit, SROs, if you can actually even functionally do that, training, out of the community liaison roles, problem solving, warrants, and traffic, there would, there could be an argument that those, those response, I mean, you would, those response times would reflect accordingly. I mean, we're going to have issues if we start doing that based on the information that you provided us. You asked for eight because you're worried about those type of things.
One minute?
Am I right? I mean, is that fair?
Yeah, of course. What you may not know is at any given time, there's five, six, seven deputies that are working the street for that entire geography of Douglas County. There's six, maybe seven on a good day that are in the field. So if we're going to have to pull from patrol, that'll affect response times, that affects public safety. I don't want to have to do that.
Okay, thanks, Sheriff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No other lights? Commissioner Garcia?
In regards to SROs, I'm just curious, I don't know, you know, what the practices are, you know, nationwide or comparables in regards to collaborating with school districts and such and the funding mix. It sounds like, at least here in Douglas County, the mix is 50/50. Is that?
It is 50/50 of the total cost, not just the cost of the salary, but the benefits that go into that.
Gotcha. And how did, how did we get to that? Was this a discussion of OPS, or is that led by law somehow, or?
It's not in statute. That is, that is sort of the accepted practice for our area. It's a similar model. The Omaha Police Department uses sort of a 50/50 cost share, and we've been doing that since we started the SRO program.
Okay. And definitely not speaking for or in favor in any regard, just kind of for clarification, it's not, it's not a mandated position, right? It's something we choose to do.
Correct, it's not in state statute.
Okay, got, got it, got it, got it. How do other communities like Lancaster and maybe that are comparable, how do they handle SRO positions in regards to like the mix of funding?
I don't know about Lancaster. I know with Omaha Police, what they do sometimes is they have part-time officers who fill in those positions, and that way they can take their officers and backfill some of those positions. The problem is, we don't have part-time deputies. We don't have reserve deputies, what we have is full-time deputies. So, and with us, again, it's a 50/50 split between us and all the school districts.
And how many of those SROs do we have?
We have, this coming school year, we'll have nine, because the OPS is bringing on the new high school, so we'll have nine SROs.
Got it. And is it only the sheriff's office that does SROs, or OP, or, excuse me, OPD does as well?
They do.
They do as well?
Yeah, Omaha Police Department does. I think most metropolitan agencies actually do have SROs in their schools, even like Boystown, they have SRO in their school as well.
Okay. So is it kind of a matter of capacity and who can kind of take on that SRO position, or how do they kind of pick and choose which agency does it?
It's whoever the school, where the school jurisdiction falls in. So if the school jurisdiction falls in our jurisdiction, then it's on us. Like, for example, we had Millard West, but when Omaha annexed that area, then the Omaha Police Department took over the SRO for that position.
Okay, got it. All right, appreciate those clarifications. Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this'll, I can assure you, this isn't really very self-serving, but I think it puts context around, from my standpoint, but I think it puts context around why you gentlemen are here in front of us and why Tom Riley was earlier, why Don Klein was last week. We're, this whole thing is a reality that's creeping, there's a reality that's creeping into almost every one of our departments. And, you know, you can take corrections, you can take the folks that aren't elected officials, you can go all, almost all the way down the line. And it's a reality we all are learning about, and we're going to learn a little bit more about it this afternoon, and we're going to keep learning more. Increases and valuations are not matching, the rate of inflation is not being matched by that. So the increases in assessments and increases in valuations are not matching the inflation rate or the stagflation that we're dealing with right now. A lot of people would say, some people would walk into this room and say, well, okay, great, you tighten your belt, this is, this is the citizen's money, you tighten your belt or you go find things that you can cut. That sounds awesome, but since I got here and I served a certain amount of time in legislature, that type of stuff sounded great, but then you realize that the feds are pushing you from behind and you can't do anything about it. Then you realize when you get into the county level that the state and the feds are pushing you from behind, you can't do anything about it. You guys have to watch courts, you can't walk away. And if a judge walks in and he says, "Watch this court," you guys got to jump. And then you say, "How high?" Because there's no deputy there. Guess what I'm getting at is, we can cut things out of a business budget, I've done it for years. You can cut things out of a personal budget, you've done it for years. What you don't cut out of those budgets, it sounds like I'm preaching to you, I'm not. I'm telling you why I appreciate what you guys are thinking here to a certain degree. When you, when you squeeze that business budget and you squeeze that personal budget, you don't squeeze things like baby formula out of a personal budget, you don't squeeze things like food out of a personal budget, you don't squeeze things, you squeeze marketing out of a business budget. You don't squeeze, if you can help it, you don't squeeze personnel, because you've got to go out and sell more product. Public safety is an essential service of what we were, we are supposed to provide. That's one of the most essential services. If that's the case, not only do we not have much of a choice, because there's mandates out there, but it boils down to what I believe, what we believe are essential services, if they're not mandated, that we have to provide, then we have to start making those value judgments. If, if you guys don't have the resources to do what you need to do down here and you start pulling people off the street, I for one will give you the resources. I don't see, you're the subject matter experts, you're telling me what the authorized staffing level should be. Again, I'm not patting you on the back like I wasn't patting Tom Riley on the back. I'm saying, I've never sat in a squad car, I've never managed a command center, I've never done these things. If you're telling us that this is a need, not a want, we can crunch the numbers and try to figure it out. All I'm saying is, at the end of the day, you're going to hear it a little more this afternoon, and you're going to hear it going forward, we've got some issues that we've got to deal with, and we've got to distinguish between those wants and needs. So that's my speech. I'm telling you, if there's wants in there, guys, we can't do it. If they're, if these are needs and these are authorized and mandated staffing levels that we can't do anything about, we're depending on your, you know, that institutional knowledge and that, and that respect for the taxpayer that we all have, right? So that's the end of my diatribe. I just wanted you to know, I appreciate you being up here, and this is a significant ask and...
One minute?
It sounds like there's a reason for it. So any comments or anything else we'd want to talk about, that's great, but thanks.
Good.
There's one other issue I want to address with the board that relates to all of this. Chief had mentioned that the state gave us till January, I'm sorry, June 4th to submit our packets. We've contacted the state, and we have a bit of a workaround, and what that workaround is, we're going to submit all of our packets to the state. We don't have an approved budget yet, so we can't issue final offers to these deputies, or these prospective deputies. The academy starts the first week in July. My request to the board is that you take a look at our budget and approve our budget at your next scheduled meeting, which it believes in two weeks, because next week, next week there is no meeting, the week after that is June 7th. If we don't get a budget approved by then, then we can't make final offers to any deputies. And come March of next year, we won't have somebody to staff in there because it takes nine months to get those folks through the academy, then through field training, and then out in the field. If we hire in July, those folks will be ready next March. If we hire, if we have to wait and hire till January, those folks won't be ready until October. So whatever the will of the board is, my request is that you take it up at the next meeting in June, if you can.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a real quick comment on, to Commissioner Friend, and you're exactly right, we've been doing this budget thing for a number of years now, and I think this is the most time we've spent and the most research we've spent on a budget. I know Captain Peterson's here, he's spent a lot of time with juvenile court, he's been very involved in the new juvenile justice center plans, and he has submitted information to us with his staffing, we've cut it down, sent it back to him, he's sent something back, we've cut it down and sent it back to him. I think this is about bare bones as we can get with what we have submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
With that, that is the last finance. We have nothing else under committees except for the Human Resources, which is a weekly personnel report from civil services presented. No need for executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I also might add that our Douglas County offices will be closed Monday, May 30th in observance of Memorial Day, and the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will not meet Tuesday, May 31st, 2022. So our next scheduled meeting is June 7th. So with that, please vote. I think Commissioner Rogers made the motion, and Commissioner Friend seconded it.
Motion passes six to zero. We are adjourned at 10:44 a.m.